Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. The meeting will start in a moment if members of council could take their seats, and we will begin. On va commencer la réunion d'anciens.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Bonjour, mesdames et messieurs. Bienvenue à Conseil municipal de la ville d'At Ottawa pour l'avant.
Welcome to City Council for April 24, 2019.
Personal reflection, and then remain standing as we have councillor Moffett introduce our special guest who will sing our national anthem. We're going to ask councillor Moffett to introduce our very special guest who will sing our national anthem.
Thank you very much. It's my pleasure to welcome Sylvia McDonald here to City Hall today. Sylvia is a lifelong resident of Manetteck, born and raised in Manetteck. She comes from the legendary Scarf clan. They had the Moffetts kind of surrounded on first-line road. It wasn't exactly a Hatfields and McCoys situation. We've always generally got along, so that's always a good thing, and that's why she's here today. You'll always see her at our Remembrance Day ceremonies in Manetteck, North Corne, and Caris. She's always graceful to be able to come and sing the national anthem, as well as "God Save the Queen." So it's a pleasure to have you here today. Thank you very much, Sylvia.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. Quand on bras et porter le paie, il s'est porté la quoi? Ton espoir n'est une épaule des plus bruyants exploit. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Well, thank you very, very much, Sylvia. And I know Sylvia's husband is here. Sylvia's husband is the real mayor of Manetteck, I think most will agree, Richard. If I could ask our newly-elected colleague councillor Ralston King to go to the table along with the city clerk, please.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. King, are you ready?
I am.
So please repeat after me. I, Ralston King, having been elected to the office of councillor in the municipality of Ottawa, do solemnly promise and declare that.
I, Ralston King, having been elected to the office of councillor in the municipality of Ottawa, do solemnly promise and declare that.
I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability.
I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability.
I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner.
I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner.
I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act.
I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act.
I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II, or the reigning sovereign for the time being.
I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II, or the reigning sovereign for the time being.
And I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
And I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
Thank you, councillor. Can you have a seat, please, and sign the document? Thank you very much, councillor King. Let me be the first to congratulate you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Especially when you're like... Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations.
Councillor King, and welcome to City Hall. Bienvenue à l'hôtel de ville.
Welcome to City Hall.
It's my pleasure to present the Mayor's City Builder Award to the Cooper Brothers. Dick and Brian, if you would come forward, please, along with your city councillor, Jeff Leeper. Welcome. You still have a fan club. Isn't that great? Welcome. Bienvenue. In recognition of more than 40 years of community work and support for local charities, the Mayor's City Builder Award is presented today to Dick and Brian Cooper and the Cooper Brothers. It's my pleasure to welcome councillor Leeper here. He's proud of his constituents and their work that they have done over many decades. This award recognizes the people who have demonstrated an extraordinary commitment to their community to make our city a better place through volunteerism and exemplary action. For those of us who've been around for a few years, the Cooper Brothers add it to soundtrack of our lives and they are admired for their many contributions to Ottawa's music scene. The band was founded in Ottawa by brothers Brian and Dick and their longtime friend Terry King. They began releasing several singles in 1974 and had their first big hit in 1978, Rock and Roll Cowboys, and the follow-up, The Dream Never Dies. Love that song. Dick and Brian Cooper and the Cooper Brothers use their success to give back to the community and help others in Ottawa. In the mid-1970s, they headlined their first of many fundraisers, performing at Lansdowne Park to raise funds for a new roof at Our Lady of Perpetual Help Church. In 1984, they held a fundraising ball for cancer research, and in 1986, a charity concert at the Civic Centre, featuring local bands and raising $45,000 to establish an Ottawa branch of the Ottawa Wish Foundation. And for the past 23 years, Dick Cooper, with the help of his brother Brian and the band, has been instrumental in producing Ringside for Youth, which is a tremendous success in our city. This annual gala features musical entertainment and local amateur boxers, raises money for the Ottawa Boys and Girls Club. The total so far raised has been more than $3 million, and the 25th edition takes place at the Shaw Centre on June 6 of this year. The Boys and Girls Club of Ottawa is an important cause for the band, and they have helped install recording studios at two clubhouses. And the Cooper Brothers wrote the theme to Chio's annual telethon and performed at every telethon from 1983 to 1993. They also raised funds for Ottawa's Children's Treatment Centre, the Ottawa Food Bank, the Ottawa Humane Society, and numerous other charities. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Dick and Brian Cooper and the Cooper Brothers for your many contributions to our community.
I would like to thank the band for its many contributions to our community.
Your councillor, of your city councillor, and your councillor in particular, Jeff Leeper, to congratulate you for the amazing work and talent that you continue to showcase in our city. Congratulations.
I just want to thank everybody. I thank Jim and thank Jeff. And thank our good friend Derek Nicholson, who nominated us. Yeah, I mean, our music, we're pretty proud of that, but we're also pretty proud of a lot of the things we've done to help out in the community, especially the stuff for kids, like the Boys and Girls Club. And lately, because we're older, we've started helping the vets a bit at the Legion, which is another great cause that we like to support. We came bearing gifts, so I brought a CD for all the people in the council. So stop the illegal downloading, play the CD. And thank the wives who have put up with us for way too long, okay? Thanks, everybody.
Well, thank you both very, very much. And thank you, Derek, for nominating, and you've obviously got a great group of fans here. For our next presentation, I'd like to invite councillor Janice Suds, Chair of the Community and Protective Services Committee, city manager Steve Katalakis, and Janice Burrell, who is the general manager of the city's community and social services department, to come forward. Welcome. Bienvenue. Janice. As some of you may know, Janice, who has served the city of Ottawa and its residents for more than 36 years, will be retiring at the end of this month. It's difficult to summarize Janice's many accomplishments and impact on our city in just a few moments.
It is difficult to summarize Janice's many accomplishments and impact on our city in just a few short minutes.
I think she is well-known for, and is respected for, is for her passion for the city, our residents, and making a true difference in the lives of people in our community, particularly the vulnerable community of Ottawa. It's not too often that one can say that they've been with the same organization for 36 years, but Janice can. She began her career in the city of Ottawa in 1980, working part-time with the Parks and Recreation Department, running and after-four summer and summer day programs. Excuse me. After graduating from the University of Ottawa, Janice came on full-time at the city of Ottawa, this time working with the community and social services department.
After graduating from the University of Ottawa, Janice came on with the city full-time.
As a file clerk, Janice went on to work at a number of frontline social assistance positions. She continued to take on new challenges throughout her career, and in 2016 was named general manager of community and social services department. I often hear many compliments about Janice and her work from her colleagues and our community partners for her passion for what she does, her dedication to responding to the needs and making the difference in the lives of the city's most vulnerable residents. Throughout her career, Janice has always taken the time to invest in building relationships, listening to people, and being respectful of everyone. I think this is a philosophy that is evident in the great work that she has done for our city and our residents, whether it's through projects like the city's 10-year housing and homelessness plan, or focusing on improving the services we offer. I'd like to take this opportunity, Janice, to thank you for your many, many decades of dedicated service and exceptional work, and we wish you the very, very best in retirement.
I would like to thank Janice for her dedicated service and exceptional work here at City Hall.
Steve Katalakis to come up and say a few words, and then we have a small presentation for you.
Thank you very much, Mayor. It's a real honor for me to be here to celebrate 36 years of dedicated service to the city of Ottawa. Some people may not know, I started as a file clerk too, back in 1985, so it's a revenge of the file clerks. We've taken over. File clerks are running the city of Ottawa. You're in good hands. You don't need any professional designation to work here. It's okay. To me, I think that dedicating your life to public service is one of the greatest callings, and people have heard me talk about this before, and I think it's one of the greatest accomplishments that people can have in their lives when they serve the public. And it's clear that working in social service has been a true calling for Janice, and an area of work that encompasses everything she believes in and advocates for. I've worked alongside Janice for many years, and I know that she sacrificed a great deal to improve the lives of others, and has always held herself to the highest standards of excellence to meet the evolving needs of our most vulnerable. Since I returned in 2016, Janice has been a valued member of our senior leadership team, and I remember the day very clearly when I asked her to take the leadership role in community and social services. She said no to me initially, but I convinced her. She's been an inspiring leader, a caring colleague, and a strong voice for the needs of our community. And it's without a doubt that our social services team, our community partners, and the city as a whole, will miss her exceptional leadership. However, Janice has worked hard to build strong teams of dedicated and talented people, many of who are here today and who are well-equipped to continue her legacy of providing responsive services in a respectful and caring way. On behalf of the city of Ottawa, we commend you, we recognize you, we appreciate you, Janice, and we're thankful that so many years ago, you made a fateful decision to work for your local government as a file clerk. Because today, I can say that without any doubt that our city is a better place because of you, and you've made exceptional contributions to our city and our community. You gave us the benefit of your experience, your talent, your knowledge, and your commitment and dedication to our community. You gave us that as a gift, and that is our small way of thanking you in return for over 36 years of dedicated service to the city. So it's with our honor that myself, councillor Suds, and Mayor Watson present you with this framed photograph of the atrium ceiling of the Princeton Avenue location of Cornerstone Housing for Women. Thank you.
I see there's Kleenex here at the podium, so I think that's a really good idea under the circumstances. I am so grateful to you, Mayor Watson, to my current and past chairs, and the rest of council, for this awesome opportunity to serve you and the residents of Ottawa. The city continues to transform in so many progressive ways, as a direct result of your vision and the priorities that you have set for us. Ottawa residents enjoy a vibrant city that is more welcoming, mobile, active, safe, and sustainable. I will miss the beautiful music that filters into my office from the grand piano. I will miss witnessing all the events at City Hall that start at the break of dawn and go into the evening, planned and executed tirelessly by staff working long hours to make sure every single event is a success. You have built a city hall that truly belongs to the people. I've had the distinct pleasure and privilege of working for an inspirational leader, Steve Katalakis, and an amazing and supportive senior leadership team, as well as all your smart, hard-working staff who have been great collaborators for our department. As for the diverse and caring staff of my department, words cannot express how extremely proud I am of the work we've accomplished together and of the partnerships we foster to continuously improve services. I have often said the work that we do in social services is not for the faint of heart. Services that are dedicated, services that our dedicated staff and partners deliver are not often called popular. I suspect, though, that all of us have known someone, a friend, a family member, or even maybe ourselves, who at some point in their lives has needed help. I would not want to see a city without these critical services. I have had a long and extremely rewarding career. I am as passionate today as the first day I started because I believe in social justice. I'm able to make this decision at this time, having full confidence in the ability and resilience of my awesome staff, who are all about helping people. Donna is the perfect leader to take this department into the next phase of its evolution. Donna's over there. She has social services background and an unmatched strategic acumen. With her stewardship and the expertise of strong service managers, I know this department is in really good hands. Thank you, council, for your support and confidence in me and my staff over all these years. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Janice, for those very kind words, and I know many of us will see you tonight at a reception in your honor. Roll call, please, Madam Deputy Clerk.
Conseil Lulov?
Ici.
Councilleur Dudas?
Here.
Councilleur Harder?
Here.
Councilleur Suds?
Here.
Councilleur El-Santeri?
Present.
Councilleur Gower?
Ici.
Councilleur Kavanaugh?
Here.
Councilleur Shirelli?
Councilleur Egley?
Here.
Councilleur Deans?
Here.
Councilleur Tierney?
Present.
Conseil Fleury?
Ici.
Councilleur King?
Ici.
Councilleur McKenney?
Present.
Councilleur Leeper?
Here.
Councillor Brockington?
Here.
Councilleur Menard?
Here.
Conseil Cloutier?
Present.
Conseil Blay?
Present.
Councilleur DeRusse?
Here.
Councilleur Moffett?
Here.
Councilleur Mihend?
Here.
Councilleur Hubley?
Mayor Watson?
Ici.
You have a quorum, Mr. Mayor.
As many of you know, the city, once again, is experiencing some real challenges with flooding, particularly the Ottawa River. I had the opportunity to tour different parts of the city a few days ago, and unfortunately, with this rain and the amount of snow we had, we're not out of difficult times for at least another week or so. So I've asked the senior person in the organization, Tony Demonte, who has responsibility for this file, to please give an update with respect to the status of the flooding, in particular, the areas most hard-hit, of course, are in West Carlton, Britannia, Cumberland. And we'd ask for an update by Mr. Demonte, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The city of Ottawa is continuing our emergency operations in response to the rising levels along the Ottawa River. We held a technical briefing on April 4 to help inform residents on how to best prepare, and the city's operations center went into situational awareness, which at that time, as you all know, we began monitoring what was going on. We had to escalate that to enhance operations and mobilize our teams on April 18 as a result of the evolving situation. The spring frichette continues to evolve, and unfortunately, water levels are continuing to increase. The experts are telling us we may see predictability now of a peak on Sunday or Monday, and we're taking appropriate measures. Projected increases unfortunately are similar to those observed during the May 2017 flood, yet as you indicated, depending on rain, depending on how the snowpack melts further up the valley and pours into the Ottawa River, that is still, we're still a little ways out to be able to predict more accurately. The city team has been responding and have set up incident command posts, support services, and volunteer registrations in the most affected areas, namely Constance Bay, Buckham's Bay Community Centre, the intersection of the 174 Morey Road in Cumberland, and the Ron Colbus Centre in the upper parking lot. We've had tremendous turnout from community volunteers, with over 1,200 registrations supporting deployment of more than 150,000 sandbags to date. We've kept the affected ward councillors updated, namely councillor El-Santeri, Blay, and Kavanaugh, and I want to thank them personally for their continued support during our operations in the hard-hit communities that they serve. I wish to thank also staff, especially the public crews, public works teams, that have been invaluable partners and have helped mitigate a lot of the work that we've had to do and have been out in large numbers in the affected areas. Also, two key external partners, actually three, the Ottawa Volunteer Search and Rescue, Team Rubicon, and the Salvation Army have been amongst others who've been providing supports onsite and have been invaluable. Sand and sandbag stocks are not only sufficient at this time to meet the projected demand and the onset, the city had 280,000 rather in stock, and we've deployed more than 150,000 to date. Another 100,000 have been ordered, and we have on, stockpiled in the different sites, more sandbags that have already been prepared by volunteers to be deployed if required. At this time, we're telling residents or encouraged to go to Ottawa.ca for the most updated information, and Mayor will continue to keep council, especially the ward councillors directly involved, yourself, informed as to the technical information we're getting from the experts on the frichette, and certainly, we will stay on the ground, have boots on the ground until the events are over and help people in the recovery. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you very, very much. Confirmation of minutes? Adoption de process verbeaux for the meeting of April 10, 2019? Carried. Declaration of interests, including those originally arising from prior meetings? Déclaration de conflits d'intérêts? None. Communications as presented? Regrets? No regrets filed to date. Motion to introduce reports? Motion important presentation de rapport? Conseil McKenney? Appui par conseil Suds?
Ottawa Board of Health report three, Audit Committee report two, Community and Protective Services Committee report three, Standing Committee on Environmental Protection, Water and Waste Management report two, Planning Committee report five, and the report from the city clerk and solicitor entitled Summary of Oral and Written Public Submissions for Items Subject to the Planning Act: Explanation requirements at the City Council meeting of April 10, 2019 be received and considered.
On the motion? Carried. First item, Ottawa Board of Health, Ottawa Public Health 2018 Annual Report. Councillor Cloutier has asked that to be held, so we'll come back to that. And Dr. Etches is here to answer questions. Committee reports, Audit Committee report number two, Office of the Auditor General, Bureau de Vérificateur Général, Plan de Vérification pour 2019. Councillor Shirelli? Item four, Office of the Auditor General Annual Report and Detailed Audit Reports. Carried. Item five, Office of the Auditor General Report on the investigation into the transfer of funds to a fraudulent supplier. Carried. Item six, Ottawa of Community Protective Services Committee Report number three, Rapport numéro trois du Comité des Services Communitaires et de Protection. Item number six, Ottawa Community Housing Corporate Mortgage Refinancing. Carried. Item seven, Amendments to the Ottawa Fire Services Fee and Charges Bylaw. Modifications réglement concernant les droits associés aux services d'incendies d'At Ottawa. Carried. Item eight, Bylaw Review Framework. Councillor Hubley, did you have a question on that?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to meet with Mr. Willis later on, so I won't ask my question here. I'll do it offline.
Any questions? Okay, we can do that now and maybe free up some staff. Go ahead.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question with the bylaw review. We were supposed to deal with on- and off-leash dog parks quite a while ago, and that got bumped off. Is this a part of this framework in any way? And forgive me, I wasn't present at the meeting, so I don't really know.
Mayor, the framework provides council a modality with which we move forward. The councillors, directly to your question, will be coming back to you and asking you what bylaws you want reviewed in the term of council, and at that time, that can be added there, and council as a whole will decide what our work plan will be for the next term.
Okay, I'll follow up later, but I certainly have heard from a lot of residents, I think it was Chair Deans back in the day, we were supposed to do that, and with Uber and other things that came into play, it pushed it off, and now I think we have to take that opportunity and fix that, so thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tierney. On the motion? Carried. Item nine, cinquantième anniversaire de Vanier en 2019.
50th anniversary of Vanier in 2019.
I just have a quick question?
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
Holder, go ahead. Just a quick question to Mr. Chenier. I just wanted to know, this is a significant amount of money, it's a worthwhile event, of course, but is there any reporting mechanism that's in place to ensure how it's being spent? that's in place to ensure how it's being spent?
Mr. Mayor, yes, there is. We will be following the, essentially, the guidelines and terms and conditions for our civic events program, which will require the group to sign off on terms and condition, which includes a reporting requirement post-event.
Okay, thank you. If there are other people to speak out of council, we'll have to come back to this unless it's brief, counselor, do you want to have a more fulsome discussion?
It just speaks to precedent, really, I just want to, I just want to see whether we, if we approve this, I mean, for example, I was talking with Counselor Tierney yesterday, and it's the 50th year that Barhaven has been built, okay, as an example, who would think it? But what kind of precedent does it set? Are we going to be looking at other communities wanting to come forward and getting money for the same kind of purpose, and would it not? Don't we have a process in place that people can apply for, for special funding?
Mr. Mayor, at committee, committee directed staff to come back with, to have a look at the policy, the civic events policy, and how we might look at milestone events and larger grants, and so staff will prepare a report and bring that forward to council with some options on how to deal with these types of larger requests for funding.
Yeah, it was, the direction to staff on page 105 says, "The staff review the present process and developed policy framework with guidelines and criteria, as well as identify sources of funding for large special community events." And I'm not, I won't be supporting the future dipping into the contingency fund, because that's not the purpose of contingency fund, it's for emergencies, not for celebrations. So for this time, we'll, I'm going to support it, but I think committee did the right thing at CPS and directed staff to come up with a framework, because we, otherwise, the floodgates will open, folks, and we will have every group celebrating the, you know, the 79th anniversary of something, and, you know, it gets a little out of hand, so, okay, thank you for that feedback, Counselors Harder and Dudas. On the motion? Carried. Item 10, Solid Waste Residential Collection Contracts, Counselor McKenney has a direction to staff, counselor, if you'd like to read that, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did have a discussion at committee and about the possibility of staff looking at electric trucks and trucks using biogas, and did get a lot of feedback, but, from staff, but, you know, looking into it further this week, I think that it's evident that we're probably closer to a solution than, than we, you know, than we were even just a few months ago, and, and the technologies are just evolving so quickly that I wanted to provide a direction to staff that they just be required to, directed to require consideration of electric trucks and trucks using biogas in the procurement of Ottawa's new garbage trucks, and that staff be required to use the methodologies offered by the City of Ottawa's Sustainable Purchasing Guideline, particularly life cycle costing, and particularly to require calculation of the greenhouse gas implications of different vehicles to inform the specification and procurement strategy decision. So it's simply asking staff to consider, when they are going out to procure new garbage trucks, that they, that they include the consideration of electric trucks.
Counselor, we have other people who want to speak, so we're going to have to hold this then.
No worries.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we'll come back to that. Item 11, Response to B City Motion. Carried. Item 12, City of Ottawa Declaration of Climate Emergency. Ville d'Autre, Déclaration sur l'urgence climatique. Hold it. Item 13, Planning Committee Report Number Five. Rapport numéro cinq, le Comité de l'Urbanisme. Zoning Bylaw Amendment 10, O'Blates Avenue and 175A Main Street. Carried. Item 14, Zoning Bylaw Amendment 20, Mark Avenue. Modification de règlement de zonage, 20 Avenue Mark. Adoptee. Item 15, Zoning Bylaw Amendment 263 Greensway Avenue. Modification de règlement de zonage, 26 Avenue Greenway. Carried. Item 16, Zoning Bylaw Amendment 4840 Bank Street. Modification de règlement de zonage, 4840 Rue Banque. Carried. Item 17, Zoning Bylaw Amendment 4747 and 4755 Bank Street. Modification de règlement de zonage, 4747 et 4755 Rue Banque. Carried. Item 10, Zoning Bylaw Amendment Part of 4789 Bank Street at an unaddressed parcel immediately to the northwest. Modification de règlement de zonage visant une partie de 4789 Rue Banque. Carried. Item 19, Front-Ending Report Roundabout Bryan Coburn Boulevard at Jerry Lalonde Drive, Jerome Jourdain Drive. Rapport d'entente, califour, giratoire, promenade Bryan Coburn et Jerry Lalonde et Jerome Jourdain. Carried. Item 20, Official Plan Amendment, 150 Settlement of Appeals Building Height and Design. Règlement de certain appel relatif à la modification 150 de plan officiel. Carried. Does anyone wish to remove anything from the bulk consent agenda? On the bulk consent as presented? Carried. Okay, so the first item is provincial, or sorry, Ottawa Public Health 2018 Annual Report, and we'll deal with the provincial budget announcement motion at the same time, so Dr. Etches is there, and I believe Counselor Cloutier had a question.
Merci, Monsieur le Maire, thank you, and thank you, Dr. Etches, for being here and the leadership of the department. Since we passed the budget at OPH, there's been quite a few changes. The provincial announcement on safe injection sites, the provincial announcements with respect to consolidating 35 board of health units in Ontario into 10, the provincial announcement last Thursday with respect to Toronto Public Health and some upcoming cuts, and they, of course, all have our attention, because we believe in the value of public health to the benefit of our, of our community, in reducing epidemics, reducing chronic disease, improving our environment, healthy babies, all of those reasons. Are you able to provide us with an update from the department, from, from your office, with respect to, to the impacts and the timelines that we will have to deal with, with these issues?
Merci, Consul. The timeline, first upon us, is for the fiscal year this year, 2019, where we understand the cost-sharing formula for the provincial share, which is currently about 75%, will decrease to 70%, so that's 30% for the municipalities. Currently, the City of Ottawa municipal contribution is about $13.6 million, or less than $14 per person across Ottawa, and so we don't have any details beyond that. There's discussion about changes to programs that are 100% provincially funded, and the funding formula changing over the years to come. So we have not yet received our provincial funding announcement for the City of Ottawa, so it's early days for us to understand specifically exactly what the funding impact will be. The next deadline that is important is April 1st, 2020, when we understand that the 10 new autonomous public health entities with different boards of health that are regional are meant to start operating. So that's less than 11 months from now, or less than 12 months from now, and we don't yet have details on what those regions will be for those 10 entities. Certainly seeking that kind of information to be able to plan and work effectively towards that. Overall, the whole sector is expected to, you know, find, find cuts of about $200 million across the public health sector in the province through these amalgamations and looking at back-office efficiencies. I know our back office is provided through the City of Ottawa, and it's very efficient, so, you know, keeping that in mind. Those are the main pieces that were announced in the budget.
And if I can add, as Dr. Etches said, we have reached out and we have asked the question, because we think, critical to where we go from here and how we make the decisions that we have to make, and have those difficult discussions, we need the map, we need to know what the regions are, so we're hoping to get that sooner rather than later, and then we can be in a much better position to speak to board members, to speak to councillors, and say, this is the reality that we're facing, and this is, these are the concerns that we have. So we're really pushing for that information to start, and then, much like a domino, a lot will fall from getting that information. So we're working with partners like Alpha to, to reach out to the government and to, to get as much baseline information as we can.
Thank you. So if I understand correctly, this will have an impact on our services this year in fiscal 2019?
It's potentially the case. As I said, there may be transitional funding, there may be other avenues to explore. You know, my focus right now is making sure that we protect and promote the health of the population. You know, we have essential services we provide every day, and so, you know, supporting staff to continue that work. While we think about where are the opportunities in this change, how can we strengthen, in fact, public health functions, perhaps in new ways?
And the other peace counselors, we've also entered into discussions with our city partner, as recently as this morning, we had, we had a discussion with the city manager, and, and I think we're all on the same page, we need more information at this point to decide which way we're going forward, how we're going forward, and what those challenges are going to be, but, you know, we've, we've opened that dialogue with Mr. Cantalacis as well, and he's been very open to it.
I'm sure work has started on the 2020 budget, I presume work has started. The, the potential of these changes being, becoming very real, and I'm sure they, they will be real at the provincial level, will be reflected in the 2020 budget.
I think the next time, we may need to discuss with council the 2019 budget, and then into 2020 would be when we hear from the province about the 2019, it's, that's the first step.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, counselor. Counselor Kavanaugh, please.
Thank you very much. One of the proudest moments I had when I became a city councillor was to, was to join the Ottawa Public Health Board, because I knew the work that was being done. As a trustee for eight years, I saw the work that was done in schools, the partnership that we had, and one of my big concerns is how these, these cuts are going to hurt kids, because currently, we have these amazing partnerships, and I just want to know if that's been raised, because this is a very special relationship. We, we work within schools, we, we, you know, make sure people are vaccinated, we, we do so many services, and, and as I've repeated before, it's, it's a 2% solution. Only 2% of the entire health budget is public health, and yet, it saves so many lives. I just wanted to ask about, has that conversation been started in terms of the concern of, of our children at the, at the school level?
Thank you, counselor. When, when faced with the possibility of significant changes to the public health sector, potentially reductions in, in the resources to, to operate, it does start us thinking about what are priority services and what, what is most important in the community, and I think this is where the perspective of elected officials is important, representing your communities to help inform the way forward. We, we absolutely value the local connections on the ground, so with local service providers, we talked about the emergency response today, we're part of that, response to the floods with the city, with the school boards, you know, with police, these are all partnerships that need to be maintained as, you know, essential for continuing to improve the health of our city. So that kind of thinking is happening in terms of how do we, in a time of perhaps regionalization, look at maintaining links on the ground to local municipal and other partners?
Thank you. One of the suggestions-
Sort of the other comment I would make, counselor, to, you know, the ability of public health, the impact on people's lives, save lives, is also financially the multiplier effect. Every dollar spent on, on, on public health has a huge multiplying effect within the community, within the greater healthcare system, so I think that's something we can't lose sight of either.
Absolutely. One of the suggestions I would have, and, and in terms of our recommendations of sending a letter to the province, is making sure that we CC all our MPPs in, in the Ottawa region, and make sure that they understand the importance on the ground, the people that they represent as MPPs, how this is going to hurt them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Kavanaugh. Counselor McKenney?
Thank you. I don't sit on the public health board this year, but I did, or this term, but I did last term, and it, it certainly was one of the more rewarding bodies that I sat on for four years in terms of the, the work that was done through public health. So, you know, all of, you know, what's happening now with the cuts is, is really quite disconcerting. And when I think about last term, you know, the most significant thing I believe we did in terms of recognizing some of the very special needs of our most vulnerable communities, and, you know, those are folks who are often street-involved, living in shelters, living in, in rooming houses, and, and are, you know, active users of, of drugs, and, and have been so affected by the, the opioid crisis. And, you know, the most significant thing we did was to respond to that with the opening of Clarence Street Supervised Consumption Service, the support we gave to, you know, Sandy Hill, to Inner City Health for the, the trailer, and to Somerset West Community Health Centre in the ward that I represent. And I know today that, you know, Clarence Street has been, you know, effectively defunded by, by the provincial government. And it is, you know, I think that unless you are visiting Sandy Hill, the trailer, Somerset West is over capacity, the, the number of unique visits that they are getting at, at that walk-in supervised consumption service is, is multiplying monthly, and so to have one close down Clarence really is untenable. We are really, you know, the, the provincial government is leaving behind people who will, who will die, essentially, without that service. So I know that we've written a letter, I know that we've appealed to, to the better senses, but I wonder what the plan is, if and when, you know, we are confirmed that, that Clarence is not going to be funded by, by the provincial government, what we're going to do to ensure that, that that unique population, and I think it's also important to remember that residents who visit Clarence Street don't also visit the trailer, and don't also visit Sandy Hill, they are very unique groups of people with very unique needs in, in the community.
So, so, counselor, we've done a couple of things. We, we've met with the mayor on several occasions, and, and mayor and, and senior city staff have been very supportive of finding a solution here. You know, I want to make absolutely clear, the, the site is still up and running, seven days a week, it's still there, it's still working. These recent announcements, of course, make it that much more challenging, we've also reached out to our federal partners, we're awaiting more feedback from them, so it's, it's very much a live issue, and we are looking at every avenue we can to, to keep it open, but as I stress, it is still open, and it is still serving clients, and will continue as long as we possibly can.
Thank you for that, and I, I do appreciate the work that's been involved, and, and I know that, that you have been looking at this and have taken it very seriously, but I guess I just want to be on record as saying that, you know, in the end, we have got to find a solution. It is not, to have Clarence Street shut down would, would seriously harm people in the community, so I'll just put that on, just for the record, and, and to thank you for the work that you, you've been doing, I know it's under very difficult circumstances. Thank you.
Great, yeah, just to follow up on Counselor, or Chair Egli's comments, we also spoke with the provincial minister, and we had a meeting with the federal minister, and the federal minister was looking at the possibility of bridge financing in the interim, and we heard from the provincial minister the possibility, if there are capacity issues, which there will be, because if you close down one, it makes the others busier, we'll, you know, we've written back to her to see how that is proceeding, because we know that it is well-used, I think the doctor and chair, there are 15,000 visits in a relatively short period of time for 500 patients that were looking for help, so we know that- So we know that the shepherds just in the same vicinity is already overcrowded, because they're using really a trailer. I know they have plans to change that. But we've certainly reached at the political level the two people that can help us, and we'll continue to pursue that, and we hope to hear some news from the federal minister on the bridge financing at some point in the next few weeks. So thank you, councillor McKenney. Councillor Leaper, please.
Thank you, Mayor. And that was the update that I'm looking for. I want to make sure that, and Mr. Mayor, I do thank you for making similarly strong comments to those made by Mayor Torry in the wake of the cuts to the safer injection sites. Let's keep our foot on the gas to ensure that that funding continues. But that is the update I was looking for. Thanks.
Thank you.
Briefly, I had the opportunity to talk to the health, public health, when they met. And I wanted to emphasise the leadership of the chair, Mr. Eglies and Dr. Etches. We are going through a transition period. We recognise the importance of these services for the community in terms of prevention. And it's a reminder that their role and responsibilities have real impacts in the community. And with today's motion, I'm sure that it will be unanimously approved. It will give the power to both of you to demand from the province to provide for this centre there, as well as in other supervised centres like this. So you'll be well armed to go, to push Queen's Park and raise awareness to the importance of prevention that could save them a lot of expenses in healthcare. Anybody else? No?
Item one, received. Item two, carried. Next is, that's been held, Office, the Auditor General Audit Work Plan. I see the auditor general is there. Councillor Shirelli had a question or comment, or both?
At least the first. So the question is regarding the added item, the audit of the light rail to procurement process, where is it? And-
Who's your question to, the auditor general?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the first question would be, what kind of audit is that proposed to be? Is it an audit, a compliance audit, a forensic audit, or an investigation?
Mr. Mayor, through you to the councillor, it could be aspects of all, it's early stages. But certainly, there will be aspects of compliance, because as council knows, has been discussed here at council, there was a significant delegation of authority given to staff over this process. So certainly, we'll be looking to ensure that the delegation was complied with. We'll certainly look at process, which could identify areas for efficiency, including areas of additional reporting in future, perhaps. So at this point in time, not having done the complete risk, the detailed risk analysis of the area under review, it would be too early to tell. But I'd be pleased to come back to Audit Committee at some point in the future and share that information.
So on the delegation of authority, will you also be looking at whether council ought to have or was allowed to give the kind of delegated authority that you find was actually given?
Excuse me, could you repeat the question? I missed-
Well, because we're free to delegate some things, and other things, we're free to delegate parts of them, but we have to retain discretion in the end. So will you be investigating whether that delegated authority went too far as well, and whether we should make changes in the future?
Mr. Chair, through to the councillor, interesting question. I would imagine that aspects of that would probably be better addressed to the city solicitor. But as I indicated, once we've conducted our detailed risk analysis of the area that we're going to be auditing, we'll certainly consider aspects of that, and obviously spend some time with the city solicitor as well.
Yeah, so if council, if you determine that there was delegated authority, will you also be determining whether the interpretation of that authority was correct?
Mr. Mayor, the purpose of, the role of the auditor general is to assist council in holding themselves and the administration accountable for the expenditure of funds. It's certainly the exercise of that authority, that delegation of authority, that we would be auditing. Their interpretation of that delegation, I think, is expressed in their exercise of, their activities in relation, in response to that delegation, so-
So that's yes.
I think there would be aspects of that that would be considered, yeah.
All right, thank you.
That's it, councillor. Thank you. Councillor Menard, please.
Thanks very much, Mr. Mayor, through you. And question is to Mr. Hughes. I'm glad the audit is being done. I think it's important that we've got some clarification. I have a few questions. Will you be able to discern whether or not the 70% technical threshold was reached as part of this audit?
Mr. Mayor, through you to the councillor, I think certainly at Audit Committee, we made it very clear that by law, through the municipal act and by our own bylaw, we have access to every piece of information that the city produces. We can speak to any individual that participated in the project. And anytime we have asked for any information, we've received everything. I don't expect that there will be any issues this time, so I would have to say that, yes, we would be able to see that.
Okay. That's very, very helpful. Thank you. And will you be able to detail how discretion through delegated authority may have been used in this scenario? I think it's similar to councillor Shirelli's question on scope and process. Will you be able to detail that for council and the public, how that may have been used in this scenario?
Mr. Mayor, I made it clear at Audit Committee when I talked about the logic for adding the procurement process for LRT Phase Two to our annual work plan, that while we will be able to look at everything, and be able to ask everyone who participated any question that we deem important, we will still be bound by any requirements to hold some information confidential. Some of the information might be time-sensitive, in which case, there might be some information that we could share, because it's after the procurement. But we will, we are still governed by the legal opinions. That doesn't mean that we won't seek additional legal opinions, but if there is information that would expose the city to potential liability, if that information were disclosed, we would still have to consider that in what we share in our final report.
Okay. And the last question to you, and I just have one other follow-up, is are you able to, in this audit, as of course of this audit, able to tell council why we were able to speak about some financial aspects of the bids, who came in lowest and highest, but not to release other information about the bids?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, as I indicated, we will have access to everything, so we would certainly be able to see the logic behind the decisions that were taken, as to what information would be shared and what would not be shared.
Okay. Perfect. Thanks so much. And then this last question is just to the city manager on the same topic. We've been told councillors will be seeing the agreements, the signed agreements, once they were signed. Have they been signed, and are we going to be forwarded those shortly?
Mr. Mayor, yes, the, all the agreements now, the two components of the procurement process were signed, so we are basically just finalising the closing process, but we're locked in now, and the contracts have been awarded. And as we had advised council before, that we need several weeks now to do the redaction and look through the documents to ensure, as the auditor general said, there are some aspects which may be commercially confidential. But we, as past practice, will be posting those agreements on the website for everybody to see.
Thank you. Councillor Blay, please.
Thanks very much. Will, as part of the audit, will you review the process of providing the delegated authority, including the committee record and questions asked, and exactly what issues were brought up by members of the committee when that delegated authority was provided in March of 2017?
Mr. Mayor, through you to the councillor, probably a little bit premature to say yes or no, that we would look at the, that we would go back to look at the discussion around that original delegation, but certainly it's something that we'll take under consideration.
Excellent. And I presume that as part of this review, and correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe that you yourself are a trained expert. At some point, you will be hiring subject matter experts to provide guidance and/or their observations about the LRT program and the procurement process in particular?
Mr. Mayor, the councillor's correct. I'm not a trained expert, and don't pretend to be. When we have done any work in the area of light rail, we have brought in outside experts to help us, to assist us in our work. And of course, we do a number of things to vet those experts. First of all, we have to make sure that those experts have not done any work on any aspect of the City of Ottawa light rail projects. And then, of course, we vet our experts with city staff to make sure that it's acknowledged that these individuals are experts in the field.
And you've conducted several audits about light rail and the preparedness for light rail to date. Have there been any glaring problems revealed in any of your audits so far?
Mr. Mayor, we've conducted three audits so far. We're in the final process of the third. There have been areas of improvement identified, but no, certainly no glaring issues in relation to light rail so far.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Hughes, and your team, and Chair of Audit, councillor Cloutier. Merci. So on item number three, carried. The next item that's been held is solid waste residential collection contracts. So you heard from councillor McKenney on her direction, and then I believe there was another member of council that would like to speak to this. Councillor Hubley, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, the direction that the councillor was giving staff was specific to certain alternative energies. I would like to just leave it as a general term, because in my zone, we have trucks that are running on natural gas, that are certainly much better for the environment, brand-new trucks, and I know very popular in the area, and they seem to be able to do the job fine. So if the councillor is okay with an amendment just to say alternative energies, or fuels, then I'd be very happy to support that. Is that okay?
Councillor?
Maybe I could just clarify for the councillor and then make that decision. So I'm not asking just for electric or biogas, I'm just asking for that consideration through the procurement process. So that would include all types of vehicles, including natural gas, including what we're using today. So all I want to make sure is this, is that, maybe I could defer to staff then, is that when we procure our new garbage trucks, that all alternatives will be, methods will be used in the procurement process. I just don't want to, you know, I think we left it at committee, that, you know, staff were looking, and we, you know, they just hadn't come up, you know, come to an agreement on a good alternative. But I think that they're out there, and I think that if we just use that lens in our procurement process, that we may or may not get an electric vehicle that could, that could, you know, crush the garbage, and that could travel the amount of mileage that we need. I just want to make sure that we're asking that question through the procurement process. So not necessarily coming out with it, but asking that question through the procurement process.
I think we might have a solution, councillors, that the deputy clerk has provided, that after the second word, trucks, alternative fuels, including using biogas.
That's fine, yeah.
Is that okay? And I think that deals with your issue. Okay? Thank you. Yeah. Agree. Okay.
So it's alternative fuels and energies, right? Like, I just want to make sure that-
Yes.
I don't want to come back just using different fuels.
The deputy clerk's taken note of that. Great. Thank you. Councillor Blay, please.
Thank you very much. And so is staff interpreting this direction as putting additional priority over these types of vehicles in the scoring of a procurement? Or what is the implication of this direction from staff's interpretation of it?
I'll ask Mr. McDonald to come down and talk about the sustainable procurement guidelines and how they work.
Mr. Mayor, the sustainable purchasing guidelines recommends that staff look at, among other things, a total cost of ownership, which would include more than just the initial purchase price, but the acquisition, operation, maintenance, and disposal of the asset. And so part of this process, we would work with Fleet Services to evaluate the operational requirements, and how to take that into consideration in arriving at a procurement decision.
So, but that is an economic analysis. There isn't a particular weighting by default based on consideration A, B, or C. It's a complete economic analysis.
So that's correct. What we would need to determine is how appropriately to weight that, and how to figure out, how do you calculate the total cost of ownership?
Sure. Thank you very much.
Councillor De Ruz, please.
Yeah.
Sorry, just councillor, I'll just read the change for councillor McKenney and council's benefit. After the second word, trucks, will be alternative fuels and energies, including. I think that's what you were looking for, and I think that solves councillor Hubley. Okay. So councillor De Ruz, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a general question to our procurement and our staff. Like, in our regular day-to-day practice, and when we're looking into procurement or any technology, are you telling me that you guys not keeping up to date and looking into the market to see if we are, how we're running sufficient and efficient? And you're looking about all the technology throughout your practice or your operation during the year?
So, Mr. Mayor, I don't want to speak on behalf of Fleet Services, but I understand that they are regularly keeping track of what is happening in the market in developing their specifications that inform the procurement process. And with regards to sustainability, 96% of the purchasing dollars spent at the City of Ottawa on annual basis includes sustainability factors incorporated in the sustainability guidelines.
Thank you. Just, it raised a concern to me, if you need a direction from councillor at the city table at 2019, to tell you to look on those efficiency. I thought in the last 15 years, the city's been always actively looking into technology to making sure we're being very friendly to the environment. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. So on item number 10, carried. The next item that's been held is item 12, City of Ottawa Declaration of Climate Emergency. Ville d'Autre declaration sur l'urgence climatique. I believe, who was it that held? Councillor Brockington?
Thank you. Your worshiping good morning, everyone. My question really is to staff regarding item eight of this motion. My, my question really is to staff regarding item eight of this motion. Item eight talks about working with senior levels of government to accelerate ambition and action to meet the urgency of climate change and to provide additional resources for municipalities and the public to reduce their GHG emissions and build resiliency. I had drafted a motion over the last week to specifically address some areas where the provincial government and federal government can either bring back rebate programs or bring back certain other programs that had recently been cut, specifically focusing on residential houses and vehicle ownership. And I'm not moving a motion because this is just a drop in the bucket. I think there needs to be a much greater conversation about committee about refining what our main issues are and what our main priorities are and give that direction to our upper levels of government. But my question to staff is, assuming this passes today, what do you do with item eight? It's very open. It doesn't identify any issue for you to specifically address. Do you plan on coming back to committee to engage the committee on some issues you think we need to focus on or what is the plan at this time?
So, Mr. Mayor, to respond to the councillor's question, as part of the Energy Evolution Phase Two report, which will come later this year, we are going to recommend to council the areas of action that municipality and senior levels of government could take to accomplish our reduction, to meet our targets. So we're going to recommend, we're going to actually show a roadmap of how to get to those lower levels. And most clearly, many of them involve action by senior levels of government and they will give recommendations to council on where to advocate to the senior levels of government, where to act, because their, their taxation and incentive powers are far greater than ours and don't have the limitations in the municipal act we have.
And so if that report omitted a particular area of focus that we wanted to include, it would be in order at that time to amend the set of recommendations?
Most certainly, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Harder, please.
Thank you. Similar question, and it's an important one because it's what I've been hearing from residents in my ward and, and as I run into people around the city. And the question is about money. Calling this an emergency, what does it do to a priority for all of the things that we value, we weigh in the city as far as how money is spent? Does it immediately mean that if there's a deemed emergency in this area, that we are going to funnel money there, perhaps out of budget sequence, prioritize it over roads, for example, cycling lanes, mops, all the other things that we do? Some people may say that those things are, you know, are required because of the climate, but I'm, those are questions I'm being asked. I would not want to support something that advantages this over and above everything else because to many people in the city, there are things that are of great importance that we already aren't able to find out. So I don't know who best to answer that question. Tony, perhaps? Or Steve Kay?
Mr. Mayor, I'll take, I'll take a shot at it.
Mayor, I think I'll let my colleague answer.
So, Mr. Mayor, for the motion for the councillor's report, the additional resources that are being asked for are to do two things. One is to accelerate the energy evolution project we already have to report earlier than we would have otherwise reported, and also do the technical analysis to reach the deeper greenhouse gas reduction goals other than what council had previously set. So that's what the additional resources are. There are no additional resource requirements at this time being asked, and when we bring the EE Phase Two report to you, that's when we'd be mapping out over the next couple of years where investments could be made. So I think that to the councillor's question is best responded to when we hit that second report on energy evolution phase two.
So we'll see that through budget processes. For example, you know, come June or July, when we're talking about budget for next year, probably would have a focus there. And also, you know, Mr. Wiley, with the Waste Management Review that we're doing, the fulsome review there, I think that's, that's low hanging fruit for us when it comes to climate protection. That'll be part of that as well?
Well, we'll be going, Mr. Mayor, we'll be coming forward with the roadmap in the summer, so council will get a fulsome look at the roadmap on the way forward to the refresh.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, councillor. Councillor Shirelli, please.
So my first question regarding climate change in this motion is, what will we be doing to determine how we will operate as a city as the climate warms? Because regardless whether activities are successful, it is going to warm somewhat. So I'm wondering what we're doing in this or in future recommendations to handle that and to adapt?
So, Mr. Mayor, there are two parts that, in terms of a city response in this situation. One is the mitigation measures we would undertake, both in terms of reducing our corporate emissions and trying to encourage reductions in the community in terms of emissions. The other half is the resiliency plan, which is part of embedded in this motion. It's also part of our work plan for this year. And resiliency planning means trying to harden our infrastructure for the, harden doesn't always, isn't always the right word because sometimes it's softening too, but it's adapting our infrastructure to meet different climatic conditions over time. So we are, as part of this, undertaking the, the resiliency planning as well. So I trust that answers the question.
Yes, okay. And then just some comments. I understand the importance of, of the majority of the motion, but the use of the word emergency, I think, is misplaced. It's urgent and important, but not necessarily an emergency. There won't be sirens going off. We're not moving climate change to the emergency services department and we're not abrogating the powers of council to deal with these issues. So it falls outside a typical emergency and I don't see the need for doing that. Secondly, I think by applying the word emergency, we open floodgates to other very important things, demanding a state of emergency or a declaration of emergency at the same time. So you'll have people demanding emergency be declared for guns and gangs. You'll have people demanding an emergency be declared for homelessness. And even financial and road emergencies, you'll have all sorts of people pointing to very important things, asking us to declare an emergency because they're very important. And I wouldn't want to end up there. So what I'm going to do is ask that we split the motion into its, I believe, four component parts. And I don't think I need a, sorry, it's eight component parts and I don't think I need a, a motion for that. So just ask that you split it into the component parts.
Just on that, Mr. Clerk, can you, and solicitor, can you just give us a, a brief overview of the, the term emergency? Because it does have different meanings for my role and the city's role versus the motion. I think that might clarify for people.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, with regards to your role under the Emergency Management and Civil Protection Act, which I think a number of councillors alluded to either inadvertently or directly, you have the authority to, and you have the discretion under the statute to declare that an emergency exists in the municipality or any part thereof and may take such action and make such orders as you consider necessary and are not contrary to law to implement the city's emergency plan and to protect property and health and safety and the welfare of the inhabitants in the emergency area. You also have the responsibility, if you do so, to contact the Solicitor General of the province of Ontario. And ironically, you as the mayor and the council may at some point in time in the future declare that an emergency has been terminated under that legislation. That is not what the motion is before you from the committee. So it is not under the Emergency Measures Act that, or the Emergency Management and Civil Protection Act, that council would be acting. So there is no triggering of our emergency plan, no automatic spending of money. The mayor will not be issuing orders, doing things. It is very limited to the capacity that I think some of the members have spoken to.
I think that was helpful. Thank you. Councillor Tierney, please.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick questions. With this, item number two in this list, the sponsors group and its compromise, what's the reporting structure for this group? Does it report back to the Environment Committee or is it directly to council?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I don't think staff can actually answer that question. I would imagine, and the city clerk can correct me, the Standing Committee on Environment, et cetera, has carriage of this file through his mandate. So one would imagine it would report back there if that's what councillor Menard's intent was.
Okay, so similar to like the heritage reporting, the planning, it would go to the Environment Committee and be dealt with there. And what are the mechanisms? And I'm just asking this question in regards to, because I like to see tangibles and I like to see things that we can actually achieve. What if they bring back some recommendations that we don't like? Are we handcuffed to it? Would it always come back to council? I'm just thinking of, you know, some of the low hanging fruit for some people would be increased parking rates or toll roads downtown or things that may not be of a public appetite. Do we always have the authority as council to look at those recommendations?
Mr. Mayor, council would always have authority to be the final say on any recommendation in any process.
And I think that's very good to know. When it comes to the legacies of prior, prior environment committees, I look at 2010 to 14 and Maria McCray did a tremendous job, very progressive. I think our council went well and beyond when it came to, look, Maria worked very hard on that file about getting one through seven plastics into that bucket to make it easier on people. One of the toughest votes this council's ever dealt with was going to biweekly garbage pickup and, and she was a, a big proponent of getting us into that place. You look at David Chernoshenko taking the reins and having a legacy with really advancing the energy evolution, voting and supporting LRT, the biggest eliminator of GHG gases. So I think we already have a great track record of going ahead with a lot of these projects that help our municipality. LED lighting, big push, we're at the 50% mark. So when I see things like this happening in, in the past, I know we can continue to do this in the future. I guess I have a couple of questions about how can we put some of these things into the pipe that we see is important? I brought up, for example, the solar powered Big Belly garbage cans. Al and I have talked about this before, where it, it sends a signal back to home base. You don't have to have garbage trucks racing around the neighborhood on a regular basis. It would only go pick up the can when it's full. Where do we, would this be this kind of working group we'd funnel those kind of ideas into?
Mr. Mayor, certainly welcome, any councillor, anytime who has ideas they'd like us to explore, welcome to send those to me directly and I'll provide them to the team. The Energy Evolution Phase Two project is looking at all of the major sources of emissions and what the best strategies are to reduce those numbers. So we're, we will be bringing a menu of options back to council.
Okay, great. And I think there was a story in today's paper, and I've talked about this before, about the line markings on the road. Of course, you know, we think we're doing a great thing. We're sure some of it's a federal aspect where they say we can't use certain kinds of paints anymore. But other municipalities have struggled with this as well. So now we have double the amount of vehicles driving around, it's going to cost us more money, all that great stuff. But you look at other municipalities and just a quick Google, BC, I guess, was struggling with this as well. How well connected are we with other municipalities that have solved their issue with longer lasting paints?
Mr. Mayor, people like Phil Landry and our team and others are connected on both the Canada-wide and US-wide basis in terms of their networks and through various forums and stay very, very current with all this information.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Good points, councillor. Councillor Dudas, please.
Thank you. No, I'm, I'm very glad that we're having this conversation. I think that this is, you know, something that, that is absolutely essential because climate change, our environment, has something to do with everything that we do, every decision that we're making. I think there's a lot of gray areas in respect to that, like councillor Harder had mentioned, you know, where's the priorities in terms of, is there a road or, oh, some excuse. But it's, I think this conversation, this motion, is coming at the perfect time because we're starting a new term of council, we're about to set our, our council priorities and it's absolutely essential that we look at it through the lens of, of how we're going to build a future for our children. My only concern with the motion is that I'm very unclear as to item number two. I'm very, I'm cognizant of the fact that we do have a body that represents what is being proposed here in the, in the form of FedCo. I'm not quite sure what a council sponsor group is going to, to do in action. I'm concerned about layering bureaucracy on top of some other aspects of this motion that are very progressive and, and, you know, forward thinking. And I'm just not quite clear as to how staff or even the mover sees that this will complement the rest of the motion. So I would like, I'm seeking some clarity on that. I'm also seeking clarity on how we determine who gets to sit on this sponsors group. So if I can maybe seek that.
Great. The deputy, or the clerk, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, with regards to recommendation number two in the report, what we've recommended is my office will work with Mr. Willis and his staff and then do a circulation of members who are on the various committees listed in this recommendation to talk about their interest with a view to bringing a motion to council prior to, I believe it's the end of May, so May-June, to confirm the sponsors group's membership. And I think at that point in time, we would also add the procedural bells and whistles to make sure that we knew who was going to be in the room, what was going to happen, and it would be approved by council.
And, but, and that's great to know. I guess, once again, what weight would this group have? How would it actually influence decision-making? I know councillor Tierney had asked this, but I'm still not quite clear because, once again, I'm looking up of, I'm looking at the makeup of this, this group, and it represents FedCo quite, quite closely. Obviously, the, the nuance of the discussion would differ, but I'm just wondering how this group would come to discussions, what's the top of a conversation?
Mr. Mayor, I recommend the councillor actually respond to his intent on that line.
Councillor Menard, do you have an answer for that?
Yeah, thanks very much for the question. It's a good one. The, the intent is not that it be a repetition of FedCo, certainly not. The actual motion isn't the chairs of those committees, it is representatives from each committee. So it, it won't necessarily be the chair of planning or the chair of other committees, it's representatives from each one. I, I think when we were discussing this as, as a part of the motion, it came up that it's difficult for us to have these sort of fulsome conversations in a smaller group that brings ideas forward like councillor Tierney was talking about. We have a lot of these ideas, but without having the forum to discuss them in a, in a sort of informal way, and that's what this provides. It provides a representative on many committees that will allow for us to embed that lens further in our decisions, but also to debate ideas and discuss ideas that would come back to the Standing Committee on Environment. So it still goes through a council lens, it'll still be voted on here, but it allows a decision or a idea forum to, to be provided from some various committees where this is directly related to, to climate change. So I think that was the, the intent behind it.
Thank you for the clarification. You know, I'm, I'm going to be supporting this motion. I think that it's, it's definitely very important that we start looking at, at climate change and our environment in all things that we do. I would like to point out, however, that we also, once again, I'm going back to the fact that there is a gray area on everything. I can't run a bus through a field. We may need to build some new roads to make sure that we can accommodate that. We have to look at the give and take on everything and what's the benefit to our residents in terms of, you know, creating a sustainable city, a sustainable future, while also serving our growing city's needs. So, you know, I am in favor of this motion. I will be supporting it. I want to thank, I want to thank councillor Menard for putting it forward and, and everyone who's worked on it, but I do have reservations about that one aspect.
Thank you, thank you very much, councillor. Conseil Fleurie.
I'd like to congratulate my colleague for making the effort and going through the mechanism to raise this discussion. And I agree with my colleague Laura, who said that the time is right because we will be reviewing our official plan, the transportation plan and all the initiatives we put forward with the light rail. This is ideal time to review those structures. There are two things, I believe, to be important in this motion. Of course, everybody has its own perception on that, but for me, there are two, a resiliency. We've, we had a summary from the city manager regarding the floods. Last year, it was tornadoes and there are people in the community that are more vulnerable than others when such situations occur. We have the seniors, people on low income. So having a better resilience for the city is important. We saw it last year with the social groups that were involved after the tornadoes to, to feed people, to, to meet their needs. So through this motion, I believe that we're calling about, upon the city management to adopt resiliency. resilient strategies to see what we can do for the most vulnerable communities. And the second point is a structural one. We have an environment committee and a council gave a clear message about the climate change and the environmental impact. All this must be done horizontally throughout the organization. It can't be just the people responsible for the environment that manage all the environmental issues. The planning is concerned, transit is concerned, public works, recreation, social services, finance, all these aspects must be taken into consideration. So I see this motion at two levels. It's a new mindset for the city, and the resiliency thing is also very important to take charge in the face of these climate change, and I support the motion in front of us.
Councillor Gower, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a quick comment and then a question for staff. I wanted to thank councillor Menard and councillor Moffat for their leadership on this issue, as well as Ecology Ottawa, who have been advocating, well, continued advocacy, not just in terms of this motion. I think this is an important motion, and I think because it is about leadership. We are not just another city declaring climate change as something that's important, we are Canada's capital city, there are other cities in our province, in our country, and around the world who will look to us, and I think it's important that we send a very clear message. And I know our residents are watching too. If I can share, last Tuesday at the Environment Waste and Water Committee, my daughter was texting me because her school class in grade eight was paying attention to this. They wanted to know what was the committee's decision. Unfortunately, you guys left it to the last item and they never found out till the next day. But, and councillor Menard, there's a few kids in my daughter's class who want to meet you, so if you're up for it, out at Gilbert Middle School. I believe that cities play, cities are the economic and social engines in our world today, and I think most people around that table would agree with that. And as such, we have to be leaders. And I think the motion sends a very clear message to staff, to other levels of government, and to our residents that this is something we need to act on and it's something that's a priority and important for council. The quick question to staff would be, we're in the review of the official plan process, so I guess, Mr. Willis, how do things like the Energy Evolution Final Report, the Climate Change Management Plan, how do these get fed into the review and the update to the official plan?
So, Mr. Mayor, the team working on Energy Evolution is contributing directly into the official plan process and fat effect. As a result of the way we restructured the group last year, they're all part of the same branch. So they work side by side, they're having direct involvement, and we are looking at some of the climate lens approaches in order to assess the implications of our recommendations in the official plan.
So to confirm then, the timelines of completing these reports are, will be able to inform the official plan?
Mr. Mayor, the very meaningful work that we're going to get later this year on the options for how to do mitigation of greenhouse gas emissions will be available in the fall. That'd be very opportune timing to feed into the official plan process.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks councillor Gower. Councillor Meehan, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too welcome the opportunity to speak to this motion. I'm glad to see that we are taking climate change seriously here. But the word emergency scares me a little bit because I'm not sure exactly how this is going to be interpreted. I understand how the decisions are going to be made, but I'm concerned about the cost of what this is going to mean to the city if we're going to add some bureaucracy. And let's be frank, money is a big issue down here, and we seem to always trot it out when we weren't going to vote against something. And just in my, what is it, five months now that we've been here at council, I just want to tell you some of the things that I've noticed, things that I think that are essential to addressing climate change, things that we can do in all the decisions that we make right now, and they don't seem to be made. Just for instance, I think it was 2014, we adopted a Building Better Suburbs Plan in Ottawa. It's supposed to be a template for city planners and developers to devise and design neighborhoods that are more environmentally friendly, but in my estimation, we haven't done that. What we're doing right now is we're building suburbs without adequate transit, so, and we don't have the roads to carry the cars. So, and, but that always comes down to an issue of money. So what we've got is we're building up congestion out in the suburbs, people have to get into town, so they're sitting in traffic, you know, hours-long traffic. And I'm told that we can't solve this issue because it comes down to money. Such things as, do we build our schools in areas where the kids can safely get to school on foot or by bicycle? No, we don't. These are issues that we're solving in our wards right now. Parents feel that they have to drive their kids to school. This doesn't make any sense to me. Are we building our suburbs with the shopping centers and stores in the area where people can walk to? No, we're not. We're asking people to drive, but we don't have the transit yet. So these are all things, I call them my bugaboos. I'm trying to, you know, to talk to developers and make sure that they build lots that are big enough to sustain a tree till maturity. These are all things that affect climate change, and we're always up against it, it seems. Even when it comes to fixing our roads, we have, we're known for potholes. We don't have the money to fix our potholes properly. And studies show, and I've got a study here to show you, his name is Ho Wang, he's a civil and environmental engineer with Rutgers University. He has determined that if we fixed our potholes in this city, which means that so we don't wreck our vehicles, we will actually cut down on greenhouse gas emissions by 2%. But we don't do these simple, basic things. It always comes down to money. If we can't do these basic things that make common sense, how are we going to put the lens on other things that could actually add to bureaucracy and cost us more money in the long run? You know, we find it difficult to talk about building a road, and Laura, I agree, you can't put, you know, a bus through a field. We need to talk about adding bus lanes, more rapid bus lanes. LRT is going to be a game changer in the city, but it's not going to be the answer for everyone. We need a concerted effort to put in more busing, to embrace technology like Lyft and Uber, to be collectors of cars and residents from residential neighborhoods, to deposit people to transit stations, to the LRT. We're not even thinking about these things because they cost money. Money is a driver in this city. Until we solve the issues that are preventing us from doing the commonplace, easy things, like better transit, more serious transit, and putting in roads and building our subdivisions so that we don't put tens of thousands of more cars out there and having people park on their lawns instead of planting a tree, then I'm frustrated with this. I'm all for, you know, making sure that we have a better climate, we have to do what we can, but god darn it, let's do the things that are common sense right now. By the way, I will be voting for this motion, and I will be pushing that we continue to build better suburbs and with better transit, okay? But thank you very much for this opportunity.
Councillor Cabanaw.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I want to concur with councillor Gower on thanking the mover and the secundary on this motion. I think it is important. This is something about, you know, taking action right now. People worry about spending money, but it's, to me, I always think of it in terms of saving money because all the things we're looking at are eventually about making this a better city, more efficient, with LRT having less garbage because we're, you know, we're getting rid of all those plastics, all those things. We need to do those now. It's something that I see as a here and now thing. I just have to make a comment about, from my colleague, Mr. Shirelli here, councillor Shirelli, he talked about opening floodgates, and I thought that was very apropos for Bay Ward. Because we need to keep those floodgates closed at the moment, we're a little worried about them. So I think that's just very apropos about the situation we're in because that's part of climate change. The water is rising. Why is it rising? That's part of what we're looking at. What are we doing here today? We're doing something for the next generation. We made a mess of things, we as the generation before. This is about the future for our kids and our children and our grandchildren. I have a guest here today, Imogen Little, who's a grade seven student at D Roy Kennedy, and I asked her what she thought of in terms of working on issues of pollution and climate change. And she says she was concerned about animals. She's concerned about animals dying. So that was her top concern, and I want to thank her for that because she's thinking in terms of what's going to happen if we don't do something. And so those are the kinds of things that we have to look at. And I would suggest that we work with schools, that we report back so that we're talking at a level that a grade seven student from D Roy Kennedy or any other student will understand that this city is doing something. So I hope that we have a mechanism that shows the schools that we're working on issues because I think that's important to them. They're the ones we're doing this for because, well, we're cleaning up our mess, so we're trying to tidy it up before we hand it over to them. So I hope that we can have that opportunity. Is there a way we can report to schools and, you know, have things that are available to them? Thank you.
Great, thank you very much councillor. Councillor Menard.
Thanks very much, Mr. Mayor. Just quickly, really appreciate the support around the table and the ideas that are coming out from folks. I think this is very much a start for us with this motion, it's not the end, there'll be more actions that'll come, and obviously, some of the good work the city of Ottawa's already been doing, like changing over the LED lights and that sort of investment that saves us money as well as reduces our emissions. It's the young people in the city that are actually leading this effort. So much like councillor Gower had mentioned, I've received petitions from schools and people to my front door. So, you know, Penny, Adele, and Madeline came to my front door and gave me some petitions on what we need to do with regard to climate change. So I'll be submitting those to the clerk's office after the meeting and with the intent that it'll come to the next council meeting on that agenda. Regarding the word emergency, you know, here's how we define it in the city of Ottawa. Any situation that constitutes a danger of major proportions that could result in serious harm to persons or substantial damage to property that is caused by natural, technological, or human-caused hazards, whether intentional or otherwise. So this motion doesn't create an emergency management plan, it's not like the short-term flooding or the tornado that would come through, we're not doing, it's not that. It's a slower-moving emergency that this sets out a plan for, of action from our staff over time. And they want to be doing this work. Our staff want to be doing this in the city, and that's why I'm so excited about bringing this forward. I just want to just also mention that the sponsors group, this is needed in an informal setting where ideas can be discussed. And let me give you the intent, I've discussed this with the Chair. You know, there's low-hanging fruit in the city that's going to save us a lot of money, but also reduce our emissions. Those are the types of things we have to be targeting right off the bat, things like retrofitting our buildings, we're doing that to a certain extent, but we can do a lot more to the exterior of buildings, just like your homes. So these are the types of ideas that will give us some savings that we need over time, but also reduce our emissions. I want to thank Andrea Flowers on staff, Ariella Kay Summit in my office, and Ecology Auto, but especially the Chair of the Environment Committee, Scott Moffat, for his leadership in pushing this through. So thanks for your support.
Great, thank you. Councillor Sides, please.
Thank you. Just a few brief comments, and I actually love something that councillor Menard just said, which is that young people are leading this. And I think it's important that we give thought to that because it's the young people that are inheriting the problems that we are all responsible for creating. I think, you know, I recognize that we have many competing priorities in front of us and that are debated at this table and the financial constraints that we operate in. However, I think this issue is an issue that pyramids, obviously, across our city, across our country, actually, but impacts every single citizen that we represent. So I am very much in support of this work, I commend the great work of councillor Menard and Moffat in getting us to this point. You know, I, when I made the decision to run as a councillor, it was about providing leadership. And I think that's what we're all discussing here today, is being a leader in this space and demonstrating our commitment to our future generations. So again, I thank councillor Menard and Moffat for their work and encourage us to support this.
Thank you, councillor Sides. Councillor King.
Thank you, thank you, Your Worship. According to scientists, we know that Canada's climate is changing faster than the rest of the world and that we only have 10 years to change course. That's why I wholeheartedly endorse this motion to declare a climate emergency. While we know we are in crisis, we haven't responded to the impending environmental disaster that lays before us. This is why the city urgently needs a set of specific proactive policies because chaos and uncertainty are increasingly becoming the new norms. Normal patterns of rainfall, temperature, and extreme weather are changing so rapidly that past baselines are no longer relevant. Governments and insurers have acknowledged this challenge, along with the fact that climate change will cost hundreds of billions of dollars. Climate change, in short, is the most significant challenge of our time and requires immediate action. Starting last weekend, our region experienced and continues to experience severe flooding. We can expect such events to become more frequent, along with longer heat waves in summer and more freeze-thaw cycles in winter. Such events will impact the most vulnerable in our society, from our poorest residents who will experience food insecurity, to our newest residents such as refugees, some of whom have been displaced by the climate crisis and who will require more affordable housing in our city. The most responsible course of action our city can take is to put in place a serious set of actions to address the causes and mitigate the consequences of climate change. A declaration of a climate emergency by council will act to recognize climate change as a priority in the city's strategic plan and will provide accompanying budget directions for the remainder of the term. It will also provide measurable criteria to determine whether progress is being made in the city's efforts. Most importantly, the declaration will clearly acknowledge the guiding principle in the city's air quality and climate change management plan that municipal leadership is needed to ensure an integrated and comprehensive approach that can be implemented by both city government and the community, which actually achieves results. With many other municipalities throughout Canada recognizing that we are in a state of climate crisis, it is incumbent upon us here to act in Ottawa. That's why I will be voting in favor of this motion and encourage my colleagues to do the same. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much councillor. Okay, so does anyone else wish to speak to the item? Let me offer a couple of comments first. Thank you very much councillor Menard for using the council report mechanism to get this issue before the committee and the work that you've done leading up to this, it's very much appreciated. I also want to thank the Chair of the committee, councillor Moffat, who I know helped along that journey and process, and we appreciate his leadership as well. I think one of the things to remember, colleagues and members of the public, is that we have not been sitting idly by over the last couple of years doing nothing. In fact, the city staff have put together nine pages of initiatives that we have engaged the public and corporations and associations with, and there are some significant initiatives that are already ongoing. Many of them are included in the report that is before us, and some of them have been talked about already today. For instance, councillor Tierney referred to the LED lightings, which is going to save us not only millions of dollars, but also better lighting product and better for the environment because it uses less energy. LRT is the biggest tool in our toolbox to fight climate change, and it will save, I believe, something like 121,000 tons of greenhouse gases when Phase Two is up and running. We have a policy with respect to new buildings to have LEED certification. There's also the notion that $250,000 of the hydro dividend is to go into energy-saving initiatives, and I would very much encourage council when those decisions have to be made at full council or at FedCo, that we put a considerable amount of those dollars into Ottawa community housing, which, as many of us know, many are, you know, living in buildings that are 50, 60 years old, they were not exactly the highest quality of product at the time, lots of leaky windows, appliances that are energy hogs, and I think they could use an enormous amount of help for the, you know, really the benefit of the residents to live in a better environment, but also better economically and environmentally. So I would encourage members to read what we've done, I would ask the city manager I would ask the city manager to ensure that the nine pages of initiatives is translated and put on the city's website and shared with many of the good environmental groups that came forward at Environment Committee. Because I think sometimes we're a little harsh on ourselves. When I hear that we're not filling potholes, we fill 240,000. When I hear we're not spending money on roads, we're spending a record amount on roads. Is it enough? No, there's an insatiable appetite by all of us around this table, members of the public, to do more and more and more. And yes, it is about money. Because you can't do a lot of the things that we're proposing without money. And that's not a good or a bad thing. It's a fact of reality, living in government or in your old house, old budget. We have to live within our means, but in many instances, the initiatives that are being forwarded are going to save us money, not necessarily in the short term but in the long run. And also, ten mals n' occasion au pommade zimer.
So it's a good opportunity for me to thank councillor Menard, the Chair—in the Chair of the committee, councillor Moffett, and all members of the Environment Committee and the environmental group that were here for the committee to present very good points during the committee meeting one or two weeks ago. So.
The first item, I believe, councillor. So yays and nays on item number one?
Conseil Cloutier.
Oui.
Councillor Egley.
Yes.
Councillor Daruz.
Non.
Councillor Suds.
Yes.
Councillor Tierney. Councillor Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Councillor Leaper.
Yes.
Councillor Gower.
Yes.
Councillor El Shantiri. Councillor Harder.
Yes.
Councillor Shirelli.
Non.
Councillor Brockington.
Yes.
Councillor Hubley.
No.
Councillor Moffett.
Yes.
Councillor Dudas.
Yes.
Councillor McKenney.
Yes.
Conseil Fleury.
Oui.
Councillor King.
Yes.
Conseil Blay.
Oui.
Councillor Deans.
Yes.
Councillor Meehan.
Yes.
Councillor Luloff.
Oui.
Councillor Menard.
Yes.
Mayor Watson.
Would you like the vote to split on number two as well? Okay, so we'll do that. Split on number two, yays and nays. Point of order?
If we're going to vote separately on item two, I think—I'd just like to provide some clarity on what it is because there seems to be a misunderstanding as to what item two would be. I don't understand why we would vote on a sponsors group. We didn't hold a separate vote on the official plans sponsors group. Sponsors groups provide oversight. They allow councillors to get involved.
Yeah, yeah, now you're on the soapbox.
Councillor, if someone requests it, then it's our policy that we accept.
Yeah, because I could be on a soapbox too for the same reason.
Okay, yays and nays?
Conseil Cloutier.
Oui.
Councillor Egley.
Yes.
Councillor Daruz.
Non.
Councillor Suds.
Yes.
Councillor Tierney.
Yes.
Councillor Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Councillor Leaper.
Oui.
Councillor Gower.
Yes.
Councillor El Shantiri. Councillor Harder.
Non.
Councillor Shirelli. Councillor Brockington.
Yes.
Councillor Hubley.
No.
Councillor Moffett.
Yes.
Councillor Dudas.
Yes.
Councillor McKenney.
Yes.
Conseil Fleury.
Oui.
Councillor King.
Yes.
Councillor Blay. Councillor Deans.
Yes.
Councillor Meehan.
Yes.
Councillor Luloff.
Oui.
Councillor Menard.
Oui.
Mayor Watson.
Yes.
Nineteen yays, four nays.
So on items three till eight, carried.
Desant.
Desant by councillor Daruz.
And myself.
And Hubley. Okay, thank you very much. Our next item is motion to adopt reports. Motion portant adoption de rapport, councillor McKenney, seconded by councillor Suds.
That Ottawa— sorry. That Ottawa Board of Health report three, Audit Committee report two, Community and Protective Services Committee report three, Standing Committee on Environmental—
Sorry, excuse me. Colleagues in the audience, thank you very much for coming. We're just continuing the meeting. It's hard for me to hear up here, so I appreciate your consideration.
Start over. Standing Committee on Environmental Protection, Water and Waste Management, report two, Planning Committee, report five, and the report from the city clerk and solicitor entitled Summary of Oral and Written Public Submissions for Items Subject to the Planning Act, Explanation Requirements at the City Council Meeting of April 10, 2019, be received and adopted as amended.
On the motion, carried, adopté, merci. Motions of which notice has been previously given. Councillor Brockington, seconded by councillor Harder. Councillor Brockington.
Thank you, Your Worship. The motion before us is basically with respect to the year-end report that the planning department provides us. There is a set of data that I and others have been quite interested in acquiring over the years, and only until recently has staff been able to compile it and make it available in a future report. So this motion basically talks about amending the report that comes before the Planning Committee to provide data with respect to the pre-consultations that are held, the number that actually result in an application within a particular calendar year, and the number of files that were reviewed by the UDRP. There is a misconception that every single file or application that enters the front door actually gets approved by city council. That's not true. This is about providing data in that report, which I think will be of value. So, Mr. Mayor, that's the genesis behind the motion.
All right, thank you very much. Any other person?
Anyone else?
Carried. Next motion is by councillor Fleury, seconded by councillor Luloff. Please, councillor Conseil Fleury, s'il vous plaît.
Well, I introduced these motions before. It is to celebrate June 1, 2019, National Health and Fitness Day here in Ottawa.
Public swimming at all 20 city-operated swimming pools, and two-for-one admission to all 17 city-operated weight and cardio rooms on Saturday, June 1, 2019, in recognition of the 2019 National Health and Fitness Day.
Great, thank you. On the motion, carried, adopté, merci. Motions requiring suspension of the rules of procedures. The first item is councillor Luloff and Dudas, road closures for Poutine Fest.
Very exciting, Mr. Mayor.
Didn't you just second the motion on health and fitness, and you're now having a Poutine Fest? I just want to point that out. It's very ironic.
Mayor, it's about balance. Everything in moderation. Mr. Mayor, if it's all right with you and council, I have a second motion requiring road closures that I'd like to move at the same time, if that's fine.
Right, and that's involving beer.
Okay.
So on suspension of the rules for both motions, carried, adopté. Floor is yours, councillor.
Right on. Whereas Orleans Poutine Fest is an outdoor festival promoting traditional gourmet, exotic, and different worlds of poutine—and I'll walk there, for the record—featuring multiple food vendors, musicians, and craft beer garden. And whereas the Orleans Poutine Fest is to occur on Friday, May 10, 2019, through Sunday, May 12, 2019, where a Central Boulevard from Breeze Wha Crescent to Prestone Drive is required to be closed to accommodate the festival and on-street festival setup. And whereas the on-street festival setup will commence at 6:00 PM on Thursday, May 9, 2019, and the festival will begin operation at 11:00 AM on Friday. And whereas the City of Ottawa Special Events and City Streets Bylaw prohibits road closures before 6:00 PM Monday to Friday, therefore, be it resolved that council approve the road closure for Central Boulevard from Breeze Wha Crescent to Prestone Drive from 6:00 PM on Thursday, May 9 to 12:00 PM noon on Monday, May 13, 2019, for the Orleans Poutine Fest, providing it meets the requirements, conditions, and approval of seat.
Great, so that is for both Poutine Fest and the Beer Festival?
For the Beer Festival, the wheres are relatively the same except for the dates, which would be Thursday, June 6, 2019, and will begin operation at 4:00 PM on Thursday, June 6, 2019. So for the same piece of road, Mr. Mayor.
And with the new rules, you can start drinking at 9:00 AM in a park near you. So good luck with that.
So pre-drink in the park, I guess.
Okay, so on the Poutine Fest motion, carried. On the Craft Beer Fest motion, carried. Next item is to welcome our new colleague with more work to committees, and we have a motion by Deputy Mayor Dudas, and seconded by Deputy Mayor Luloff. Excuse me, apologize. On the rules of suspension, carried.
Perfect. So this is basically a motion throwing our new councillor colleague into the deep end quite quickly and giving him absolutely no time to rest. So the wheres speak to the fact that with the resignation of former councillor Toby Nosbum, there was a number of vacancies that were made. I'll skip down to the wheres these positions remain vacant pending the Ward 13 by-election, which took place on April 15, 2019. And whereas the mayor, as Chair of Nominating Committee, has reviewed these vacancies in the context of the expressions of interest from the new Ward 13 councillor, Ralston King, as well as those submitted by other members during the nominating committee process in December 2018. And whereas consideration has also been given to overall committee membership, as well as members' overall workload and experience, therefore, be it resolved that council approve the following revised appointments for the balance of the 2018-2022 term of council: that councillor Ralston King be appointed to fill the vacant seat on the Standing Committee on Environmental Protection, Water, and Waste Management; that councillor King also be appointed to the Crime Prevention Ottawa, replacing councillor Riley Brockington; and that councillor Brockington instead be appointed to the Planning Committee; and that councillor Ralston King be appointed to fill the vacant councillor seat on the Ottawa Community Lands Development Corporation Board; and that council recommend to the board that member Pamela Sweet be nominated as Chair of the Board; that councillor Brockington be appointed as the City of Ottawa's representative to the Canadian Capital Cities Organisation; and that councillor Ralston King be appointed to the Ottawa Community Housing Corporation, replacing Mayor Watson, who has agreed to delegate his ex officio seat on the board.
Great, thank you. Councillor Leaper, questions and comments?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm particularly pleased to see councillor Brockington being added by way of this motion to Planning Committee. The Planning Committee is still one seat short of its full capacity, and I would like to amend the motion to include councillor King on the Planning Committee in addition.
Councillor Harder, Chair of the Committee.
I find, people, that we do have councillor yourself, Mr. Mayor, and councillor Eli El Shantiri as ex officios. He, in his role as Chair of ARAC.
Sorry, I didn't hear that.
Councillor yourself and councillor Eli El Shantiri are both ex officios on Planning Committee. He, in his role as the Chair of ARAC, just as I am on the—on ARAC as well. So we have a larger committee than what one would think.
Perhaps I could just ask the clerk for clarification.
Who's your second or council?
We're already adding councillor Brockington.
Great, thank you.
We'll ask for clarification from the clerk.
On what issue?
Yeah, can I ask the clerk for clarification as to whether there is room?
For one more. Mr. Mayor, what the discussion was with regards to being on Planning Committee was during governance, we had amended the requirements by allowing both—the Chair was correct, the Chair and yourself—to attend at those meetings. We did not make a corresponding amendment, to my recollection, with regards to the actual number on the committee. So technically, you could do it, but I would caution because the Chair of the Planning Committee is correct. You're probably going to be up to the 12 or 13 mark if everybody decided to attend, and then we get nervous because we're at a quorum of council, and that's not advisable.
No, thankfully, the number of ex officio members who are attending council—or, sorry, a Planning Committee—it's fairly rare, so I still have no issue putting forward this motion to be amended, seconded by councillor McKenney, to put councillor King on Planning Committee.
Great. Okay, I don't support this. I think we've heard from the Chair of the Planning Committee, we've heard from the clerk, that it brings us very close to having a quorum of council, which is not permitted. So if you have a written motion, we'll have to have yays and nays. But again, colleagues, I also—I think we have to take the advice of our Chair of Planning Committee, and we've in fact added one member of council today. So the motion by councillor Leaper, is it appoint councillor King to Planning Committee? Is councillor King in favor of this?
Yes.
Okay, so yays and nays on this appointment, please? Well, this is councillor Leaper, seconded by councillor McKenney, that we appoint councillor King to the Planning Committee, and you've heard both the Chair of the Planning Committee and myself and the clerk suggest this is not a good idea. So, okay, yays and nays.
Councillor Cloutier.
Non.
Councillor Egley.
Non.
Councillor Daruz.
Non.
Councillor Suds.
Non.
Councillor Tierney.
Non.
Councillor Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Councillor Leaper.
Yes.
Councillor Gower.
Non.
Councillor El Shantiri. Councillor Harder.
Non.
Councillor Shirelli.
Non.
Councillor Brockington.
Yes.
Councillor Hubley.
Non.
Councillor Moffett.
Non.
Councillor Dudas.
Non.
Councillor McKenney.
Yes.
Conseil Fleury.
Oui.
Councillor King.
Yes.
Councillor Blay.
Non.
Councillor Deans.
Yes.
Councillor Meehan.
Non.
Councillor Luloff.
Non.
Councillor Menard.
Yes.
Mayor Watson.
No.
Yays, fifteen nays.
Okay, so on the motion, as presented by the deputy mayors, carried. Next, are there any other motions requiring suspension of the rules? Notice is a motion for consideration at subsequent meeting. Councillor Meehan. Seconded by councillor McKenney, on roads.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do I read the whole thing? This is my first time.
Oh, you should.
Okay. Whereas City Council has increased property taxes by an additional 1% above the 2014-2018 term of council to eliminate the infrastructure renewal funding gap as identified through the Comprehensive Asset Management Plan. And whereas the 2019 budget forecast for road renewal in 2020 is 14.425 million lower than in 2019. And whereas additional funding for transportation asset renewal would allow additional multimodal projects that did not receive funding in the 2019 budget to proceed. And whereas at its meeting of March 16, 2019, council approved the 2019 operating and capital budget. And whereas after council approved the 2019 budget, the federal government announced it would double the gas tax transfer to cities, which will result in an additional $57 million to the City of Ottawa. And whereas the long-range financial plan provides that gas tax revenue are primarily directed towards transit projects, therefore, be it resolved that City Council approve 14.425 million of the additional gas tax revenue be redirected to fund roads identified in the 2020 roads resurfacing citywide program. And be it further resolved that staff consult with all members of council for the remaining $42.5 million to be directed towards transit and transportation-related projects.
Okay, so on this, because there are many moving parts, I'm going to ask that we waive the rules to deal with it now with a goal of referring it to the city treasurer. Because as we all know, the city treasurer is coming back in July with a full impact statement on what the gas tax money should be used for and where we're seeing cuts at other levels of government. So councillor Blay has a motion, seconded by councillor Hubley, who are the two colleagues who have been entrusted with transit and transportation issues. Councillor Blay.
Mr. Mayor, I want to ask Mr. Mayor— Mr. Meehan has introduced the notice of motion for consideration at subsequent meeting with respect to the federal gas tax program transfer. And whereas the motion to refer this matter—the treasurer is also forthcoming, be it resolved that the rules of procedure be suspended to consider councillor Meehan's motion with[1765.83] motion with respect to the federal gas tax program transfer at today's meeting in order to give timely direction to the Treasurer in advance of preparations for the 2020 budget directions.
Great, so on the motion, carried. Next is, yes, next is councillor Blay, seconded by councillor Hubley, with respect to a direction to staff on the spending of the money, and the Meehan motion.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Whereas there are a number of factors that will be impacting the 2020 budget and the availability of funds to support council's priorities, including but not limited to recently announced provincial budget pressures, whereas the City Treasurer will be bringing the 2020 budget directions report to the Finance and Economic Development Committee and council in July, providing council with a more thorough understanding of the projected pressures that the city will be facing over the term. Be resolved that council refer councillor Meehan's motion to the City Treasurer for review and consideration in the context of all other anticipated 2020 budget pressures and opportunities, and that the Treasurer will report back to FedCo and council through the budget directions report.
So on referral? Carried, councillor Deans? Sorry, it's councillor Meehan first. Councillor Meehan?
Do we, as councillors, not have, I mean, I know you're going to say we have a say when it goes to Fed, it's part of budget directions and goes to Fedco. How do we actually have a say, though, in where this money goes if we don't do this today?
Well, because we will deal with it in July, because the Treasurer is bringing forward a report that we asked her to, to come back with an analysis of where the $57 million should be spent. So council will make the decision in July. It's just, the point is, it's premature now, because not all of the information is known in terms of other cuts at other levels of government.
But the federal gas tax money, it has to go to certain projects. So they're fairly outlined in the federal government's dossier where they can go. So is it, this money is going to be directed just to specifically those projects, the transportation, transit projects?
Yeah, there's an outline, I think the Treasurer can tell you, as what the money can be used for, Ms. Similak?
Because I understand, like, we're losing money for health and for libraries and things like that. The money cannot go to these things. They have to, there have to be specific projects that have to do with transit, transportation.
So the Treasurer can tell us what it can go to.
The councillor is correct. It's very limited to the types of work that you can use the federal gas tax for, but there could be a strategy where, in fact, you want to substitute. You might want to substitute the federal gas tax for projects that are currently being funded by tax dollars, which then would allow you the luxury of using those tax dollars to deal with all the other pressures that you have, will have in front of you in 2020. As the mayor has indicated, we've only started now, as a result of the provincial budget being tabled a few weeks ago, to understand the implications that it's going to have on the city in 2020. So the idea is to keep the decision about where you're going to spend the federal gas tax, reserve it until you actually understand the full picture, and then you can make a more informed decision about what you want to do with that money. But you're correct, councillor, you can only use it on specific types of works. Roads are one of those.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. McKenney, but go ahead. Councillor Deans, microphone, please.
Thank you. Well, I understand all of that, and I agree that that makes sense as a process. We need to have the full picture before we make a decision. I guess the only thing that I'm wondering about is councillor Meehan and McKenney's motion suggests that council be consulted on our priorities feeding into all of that, and I don't see any reason why that needs to be put off until after you come forward. So I'm just thinking we could meld those motions together in such a way that council be consulted on what our priorities are as part of it, and then it can come back in July when you have the full picture, having had the benefit of hearing from members of council what they view as the priorities for whatever funds are available. So is there any reason we couldn't put those motions together and ask that council be consulted, and then it goes to the City Treasurer, and then it all comes back to council?
Mr. Mayor, the notion of consultation with respect to what those particular funds can be used for is a good idea. The issue is going to be that, so far, what we know, and it's still loose, but the information we know about the impacts in other parts of the budget, I think councillors won't be able to provide appropriate consultation without understanding what the impacts are in other areas of the budgets. The consultation, again, as the Treasurer said, may be premature. Until you understand the entire picture, then that's what I would suggest you do, the consultation, because you may be advocating as a councillor for a particular spend on this portion of money. However, you may not know that childcare has been cut back by X number of million, or housing's been cut back, or paramedic service, or public health, or whatever that impact is, and you may have a different perspective, depending on your interest and your priorities with respect to the consultation feedback you want to give to staff. So our suggestion is that the entire picture, as we know it, in July with the budget table we come back, and if council wishes to have consultation at that point around specific aspects of it, that's certainly accommodated. But our recommendation is, at this point, the effort would not generate anything that would be useful in the overall picture. Depending on what we want to do with the $57 million, as the Treasurer, as Similak said, there may be a swap-out potential in terms of tax rate funds versus this one-time source of funds. So there are going to be options presented to you at that time, and I think that's when you can have a fulsome discussion about what you want to do going forward in terms of your priorities.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Deans. Just to remind you, of course, as the city manager said, and as councillor Deans raised the issue with respect to public consultation, this motion will not allow any public consultation. So I think that's important, and I think, you know, we get ourselves in trouble when we make decisions on the fly without the full story, and I'm glad the Treasurer was able to outline that. Councillor Menard, please.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And I just want to clarify what I think the point, the point is, is that we want staff to talk to us before you go to Fedco, so that we can have a discussion about what is important in our areas, not what you were indicating before. So is there going to be time to speak with councillors? Can staff speak with city councillors about their priorities going into Fedco with the knowledge that we already have of the cuts for the provincial government?
Well, the sequencing of it will be that I think you don't do, I think you won't be able to do your priorities till after you see what the ins and outs are of the entire budget. I think the challenge, Mr. Mayor, that councillors are going to have is consulting you before you understand the entire financial picture might be a moot point, because you may change your mind significantly once you see the rest of the picture. Our suggestion is, and it's council's prerogative, of course, is that we bring back the budget directions report with the analysis of what we know are the various impacts of funding from levels of government, that you understand the entire options available to council to be able to move money around or to use money for various purposes, and then there can be a discussion with councillors about how do you want to spend those options, as we did for last year's budget, in terms of what are your ideas and where do you want to spend that money? So I think it's premature, and we would recommend it's premature to do consultation before you see the entire analysis at Fedco.
Great, thank you.
Sorry about that. So are you saying that we would see the analysis going to Fedco, and then we'd have a debate there, there'd be no discussion in advance? Can we send you an email that says, hey, take these things into consideration? I'm just saying, look, there's a lot of, there's a lot of discussion around the table just privately about where this money should go and what it should be allocated towards. Certainly, a lot of us are well-versed on the provincial budget, and I take it there may be some intricacies that come in the report, but this is pretty basic stuff, right? It's just talking to councillors beforehand?
Mr. Mayor, it's not a question of not wanting to talk to council. It isn't actually basic stuff, because there's some, there are some significant analysis and options that are going to be presented to you in terms of how you deal with capital money, how you deal with operating money, and the choices you're going to make within your tax target, where you're going to put your priorities, service cuts versus not service cuts, backfilling provincial hole versus not backfilling provincial holes. There's a whole bunch of things that, and you're only going to get one slice of it now, you're not getting the whole picture. And our suggestion is, get the whole picture, then sure, we'll have a discussion, but you, at least we're talking about the whole picture, not one small slice of it in terms of suggestions councillors may have where the money goes, because councillors may not be aware of all the options the Treasurer has at her disposal to present to you as options.
Okay.
Thanks, councillor Menard. Councilor Blay?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. It's like the guy that wins the lottery and decides to go out and buy a house and a boat when he knows his boss is about to do layoffs at work without talking to your financial advisor. Like, that's just silly. The best thing for us to do is to talk to our financial advisor, because we know our boss is going to do layoffs and cutbacks at work. So let's talk to our financial advisor and get all the information to make an informed decision about everything. I would love to go out and pay $50 million worth of roads, but not if it means other things might not be able to happen because of what is happening at Queens Park. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, councillor Leeper.
Thank you, Chair. A couple of quick questions, if I may. It would be helpful, while the headlines are still fresh, can I ask staff to provide councillors with a memo of some sort that describes the parameters for how the federal gas tax can be used? We can go back to the original agreements and try to interpret the language, but I think a plain English description of how the money can be used would be helpful, and we can use that to talk to our constituents when they see free $58 million flowing into city coffers and they want to suspend on everything under the sun. The second question I have before we go into that budget process, council policy is that we use federal gas tax money for transit projects?
That's correct.
If we are going to use it for anything other than federal transit projects, is that a revisiting of council policy? Is it a reconsideration of any sort? I just want to understand the mechanism there.
The decision to use it on transit was made when this started probably eight or nine years ago, and I don't think it would be reconsideration, because your agreement actually allows you to use it on that list of types of works that the federal government has defined. So if we were to say that we don't need to use it on transit, but we could use it on something else, then I don't think it would be reconsideration.
Okay, no, that's very helpful. Thank you, Chair.
All right, anyone else on referral? On referral, carried. Any other notices of motion for consideration at subsequent meeting? Motion to introduce bylaws, councillor McKenney, please, seconded by councillor Suds.
That the bylaws listed on the agenda under motion to introduce bylaws, three readings be read and passed.
Motion, carried. Confirmation bylaw, councillor McKenney and Suds, please.
That the following bylaw be read and passed to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting of April 24th, 2019.
Carried. Two inquiries, councillor Brockington, please.
Thank you. Further to the discussion that we had at the Environment Committee this month with respect to the green bins, I have, am proposing this inquiry today. So would staff provide a status update on the working group's progress regarding barriers faced by the multi-unit residential sector to participate in the green bin, the city's green bin program, including potential solutions? In addition, please indicate when the Standing Committee on Environmental Protection, Water, and Waste Management will receive a detailed report with recommendations regarding the development of a comprehensive, multi-residential strategy that will explore policies, programs, and pilot initiatives that the committee and ultimately council will consider in order to increase diversion and participation in the program. And finally, will staff confirm that it's their intent to recommend the implementation of green bins in multi-unit dwellings as mandatory, no later than when the solid waste master plan is submitted for approval, if not sooner? Thank you. Here we ship.
Thank you. Councillor Hubley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My inquiry is to do with, earlier today, we had the honor to host my MPP, Mayor Lee Fullerton, provincial minister and member of the Provincial Treasury Board here in this chamber, for a ticketed event known as the Mayor's Breakfast, and it wasn't open to the public. Protesters were, including, I'm told, city staff, were able to enter this area and attempt to break the glass and doors for about five minutes until police arrived. This placed the mayor's guests at risk of harm if the glass had broken or if they got through the door. I'd like corporate security to investigate and report back to council, in camera if necessary, on how this was possible. What do we need to consider to provide for better security to our guests and the public who enjoy coming to City Hall because they assumed it was a safe place? And I'd take special mention about this issue, that we're told that there was some city staff that were involved in that. If that's during work hours, I'd like to know, and that's where we might have to go in camera, I'd like to know what the options are here for that, because that's totally out of line.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor McKenney, adjournment.
That the proceedings of the City Council meeting of April 24th, 2019, be adjourned.
Carried? Carried. Thank you. Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much. Merci beaucoup.